Good evening.
It is Tuesday, March the 10th, and we are at the Aquilina Hall Center for the regular business meeting of the Leon County School Board. At this time, I'll call on our student school board member to recognize the student participants in tonight's meeting.
So first up, doing the pledge of allegiance, we have Maggie Linville. She's an eighth grader at Swift Creek Middle School. And her school activities include SGA, FCA football, cross-country, as well as the SGA class vice president.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up for our thought of the day, we have Sidney Henderson. She is also an eighth grader at Swift Creek Middle School accompanied by Adrienne Henderson, her mother. She is a cheerleader, the class president of her SGA, and does basketball.
Although we cannot intentionally change many aspects of ourselves or our world, we can exert some power over the courses of our own lives. James O. Precashia.
Thank you, ladies. If you are with these young women tonight as their principal, family member, other fans, please stand so that we can appreciate you for coming all the way out here tonight to share in our meeting. Very nice. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll recognize Vice Chair Bowen to read the changes and additions into the record for this evening's meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair. The changes and additions are as follows. The February 25, 2020 minutes were added after the March 10, 2020 school board agenda was published. Number two, add item 19.02 memorandum of agreement between the district school board of Leon County, Leon County Teachers Association, and the Leon County Educational Staff Professional Association for 2019 Best and Brightest. This MOU was recently approved by LTCA. I move the acceptance of these corrections and additions.
Move by Ms. Bowen, second by Mr. Jones. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Show those changes and additions unanimously approved. Mr. Superintendent, your spotlight tonight.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you so very much. You know, the great Muhammad Ali once said that service to others is the rent we pay for our room here on earth, that each of us must earn our place and earn our spot. About a month or so ago, I was at Rickards High School as we celebrated, had the first pitch and celebrated the fields being back on the campus. And as I was leaving, there was a young lady that had a table set up for Dance Marathon. And so we started talking about Dance Marathon, and I knew that some of our schools were involved, but I didn't, I don't think I realized to what level. So I got to talking to the young lady at Rickards about Dance Marathon. And then a week later, I was at Gretchen Everhart School, and they were having a dance off, which was quite a sight, with Jane Foye-Bullen, the proud principal leading the way, raising money for Dance Marathon. Then I go north of town to the Georgia Line and have one of my superintendent listening conversations with students at Childs High School and started talking about Dance Marathon. And when they told me how much money they raised, I just almost literally fell out of my chair. And so I wanted tonight to bring the principals of these schools forward, as well as some of the other adults that worked with these groups, just to share a little bit what they did at their school and share some numbers with you, and you're gonna be blown away. So Principal Burgess and representatives from the schools that are here that had something to do with Dance Marathon, why don't all of you and your students come forward this time and maybe share from each school what you did and how much money you raised to support Dance Marathon, and where that money was going. They had their shirts on. So Joe, you wanna kinda tee things up?
Yeah, so I believe, and I make sure they're gonna keep me right. So here locally in our area, and we also give a shout out to McClay School and JP2. But locally in the Leon County area, we raised $535,000.
Say that again?
Five, oh, I'm sorry. $545,000.
That's over half a million dollars?
Yes. And so this is for children's, the Children's Miracle Network.
Oh, wow.
And I will tell you, many of these students have made the visit to Shans Hospital in Gainesville, where they have seen students just like them who many times for an entire year have been having hospital services. They need things to help just brighten their day. And so our students at each of these schools, they did everything from, you know, I'm sure bucket challenges to dances to going through their entire phone contact list. I know some students, they hadn't talked to relatives in years, but said, can you give something? And when you have students that are highly motivated, and that's from all of our schools. I mean, I'm saying that number is from all of our schools, and it is really impressive. They are committed to it. We've got great partners from FSU, you know, FAMU, UF, they also committed to it, also on the collegiate level, they do that as well. And they all give back because you almost know somebody, everybody knows someone who's had a child that's suffered and needs something to help them through. And so, I don't know, I'm sorry, Coach Cook, sorry.
Yes, Principal Burgess is correct. I think that we raised quite a bit of dollars, myself, I came out, I gave my donation, and it's just impressive because you have a lot of kids, and many of our IB kids, they don't take PE, so they never use their gym. So this is one time they get a chance to go to the gym, and that great, those basketball teams aren't in the gym. And they get a chance to just play, they dance, they play basketball, and they do an excellent job. And I am so proud because we started this, if I'm not mistaken, in 2015. We got on board, and it's been excellent to help those students in need. And our kids do an excellent job throughout the district. And Superintendent, you should be very proud of all of our students, as well as our school board members, because they do have a servant heart.
Yes.
Jane, you wanna share just a little bit of y'all's experience?
I think Keon wants to share.
Keon, we'd like to share.
It really touched us. JP2 reached out to us along with FSU Dance Marathon. They said, we'd like to help you guys, you know, participate in Dance Marathon. And they knew that so many of our students have benefited from the Children's Miracle Network. So we said, we're all in. We raised, you know, like $424 this year, but there's always next year, and we really enjoyed being able to be included in Dance Marathon, so thank you.
So if we could, of the students that are here, just tell us your name, your grade, and what school you represent.
Hi, I'm Ansley Topchick.
And I'm Gracie Miller, and we're both in 12th grade.
At what school?
Childs High School.
Childs High School. And how much money did Childs High School raise this year?
Over $148,000.
Wow, that's still great.
My name is Sidney Black, and I'm a junior at Childs.
My name is Colby O'Neal, I'm also a junior at Childs.
So the pressure's not on for next year at all, right? I'm just saying, right? You can't let, 2021 has to outdo 2020, right? All right, see, we have green.
Hi, my name is Bridget Mooney. I'm a senior at Lincoln High School, and we raised over $38,000 this year.
Hi, I'm Amina Mubarak, and I'm a junior at Rickards.
Hi, I'm Ariana Range, I'm a junior at Rickards.
And we raised over $17,000.
Well, I'm just so very, very proud of you. You know, we talk a lot about what we do in the classroom and on the athletic field and in the arts, and that's certainly very important, but for you all to learn at such a young age to give back to help others, I mean, that lesson's invaluable, it's probably one of the greatest lessons we could ever teach you. I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart of how you represent this community and the schools that you're at. I mean, I'm just blown away. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, can we get a team picture? All right, let's come take a picture. Come on.
All right, not to move from one exciting thing to the next, but I think we have Rickards in the house.
The Raiders are in the house. Athletic Director Claudette Farmer.
Yeah, Claudette slipping in. I wanna go ahead, Superintendent Hannah, school board members, thanks for inviting us today. What an honor. I also wanna thank A.D. Farmer, as well as Dr. Barnes, Assistant Principal for Curriculum, for being here today. Coach Brian and Coach Lawson, could y'all please come to the podium? I would like to say that I am proud of both teams, our 5A champions and our Special Olympic champion as well. But when I think about student-athlete, the students, they understand. I have 10 seniors, and all will graduate May 30. They met all their requirements. So they understand the student and the athlete portion of that. So I'd like to give them a round of applause for that, that they will be graduating. So I'll let Coach Brian and Coach Lawson speak about their teams and let them share some of those positive moments, but it was exhilarating to be here in Lakeland last week and to beat my whole nemesis, my old rival in the semifinals, Sebring. That was really awesome to see that happen. So Coach Brian.
I like that, huh? That's great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We wanna thank you, Leon County School Board members, for inviting us out here tonight. Guys, we worked hard, they're committed, show pride, respect for our Raider community. We played, we went down to Tavoris, Florida, and played the defending champion, Jackson, yes, it was Jackson County. We beat them, we played them on a Friday, and then we had to play again on Saturday. And we beat them both times. And I'm so proud of these guys and the work and the effort they put in.
Great.
Also, I would like to introduce them to everybody. Jordan Octave, please stand up, he's a senior. Octavius Thomas, he's another senior. Malquez Rollins, junior. Tyrese Rooton, senior. Ty Trell Wooton, freshman. Kishon Butler, freshman. Jamal Watkins, senior. Justin Bryant, freshman. MJ Quavious Harris, senior. I'm gonna miss those guys.
Thank you, Coach.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of Principal of Rickards High School, it's Douglas Cook. My name's Eli Bryan, I'm the basketball coach at Rickards High School. I'd like to introduce, first of all, my players. Stand as I introduce you, Adrelian Robinson, hardened soul of our team. Miles Smith. Benjamin Smith. Damarian Johnson. Tamian Enzor. Kavarius Taylor. Kent Carroll. Amari McGriff. Gentry Sparks, Jr. Our coaches, Mr. Chester Coffey. Mr. Anthony Anderson. Three other coaches are missing, Gentry Sparks, Sr., Avery Curry, Sr., and Avery Curry, Jr.
This team was a very pleasant surprise. We have two people that have not, that came to Rickards this time, this year, for the first time. And together with the rest of the guys, we set a goal to win the state championship. That was our goal from day one. Stumbled here and there, but we never lost focus of what we set out to do. Here we are, 5A champions for the state of Florida.
This is a commemorative shirt that brought it to length, celebrating the victory there. I got one other to present to the proud former principal of Rickards High School.
That's nice.
Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, she wore blue just for them.
This was our principal when the team won back-to-back state championships. And before I leave the seat, I'd like to introduce you to my wife. Thank you very much. I'd be remiss, forgot to announce my assistant coach, Mr. Courtney Conyers. He helped tremendously.
And Coach, I just wanna, Coach, I just wanna say, tell you thank you for all of your efforts and energy. I mean, look, they get paid pennies an hour for all the time that they put in. They put this time in because of their love for their sport, more importantly, their love for the student-athletes they work with. And so Coach Brian, I just can't thank you all enough for all of your time. So players, how about a round of applause for your coaches? Also, do we have any family members? Are there family members of these student-athletes that are here tonight? Or if you would stand up to be recognized? Or they all drove themselves, all right, they're all heading out to Dairy Queen. Yeah, Coach.
Pardon me, I have one other player that came from work, got off from work, Vashan.
And Ms. Bowen wants to say.
Ms. Bowen.
Yeah, I simply wanted to say how wonderful it is, but I really did not want us to make the terrible mistake of overlooking the outstanding athletic director, one miss who is sitting back in back of the coach.
I mentioned her.
All right, I did too. I said, I see A.D. Farmer's here as well.
I just don't want to be missed at his give the girls. Thank you very much. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you. Listening too hard.
You mentioned that they get paid pennies. I accept, I do get a supplement. None of my coaches are paid. It's all volunteer.
Oh, wow.
That speaks volumes, yeah.
We break for 5 to 7:30. They're there every day. Last 14 years.
Oh, wow.
I think Coach, Principal Cook hit the nail on the head, man, when he said, you're student-athletes. And we tell guys all the time, that look, without your grades, you're just gonna be a playground All-American. That's it. And so many, so many student-athletes dream of becoming a state champion. Very few realize that dream, but guess what? You all did, and forever you will be state champs. So congratulations.
Superintendent, if you wanna mention Ms. Coffey, Mr. Coffey's wife, she was a long time at Rickards High School. Her son was on those championship teams back when Dr. Gale was there. We cannot go without mentioning her and all she did for Rickards High School.
She'll be expecting her shirt.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jones.
Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent colleagues, to this wonderful Rickards teams, we are so very, very, very proud of you and your great effort. You have, in your youth, are modeling manhood in an extraordinary way. I'm grateful that lifelong lessons of sportsmanship, behaving appropriately, and working hard and showing great effort, you realize now that those lessons are paying off for you already. Know that your entire community is very, very proud of you, and that you have represented us in a most noble and wonderful way, and I am very, very proud of you. And I speak on behalf of your entire community. God bless each and every one of you, and I'm certain that for all of you, the best is yet to come.
I am not as eloquent as Mr. Jones, but I just wanted to comment that earlier, we were here early, all of us were, and it was just a treat to get to visit with you guys. Thank you for being so gracious, so polite, so respectful, so intelligent, so thoughtful. Really, my pleasure to get to visit with you. So you've made us very proud, and we're grateful for that. And with that, I think you're allowed to leave if you've got homework to get to, but don't feel compelled to stay.
Great job. It's good to see you, Commissioner. That was a nice crowd.
All right, I know we have a couple of student groups here. Those of you who are standing in the back, feel free to come on up and have a seat so you can pay great attention to every lasting detail of this meeting. I know, for one, we have Dr. Ellis's Education Foundations class from FAM. Raise your hand, say hi. Great, welcome. Glad to have you. Glad to have everyone here. I see a sorority shirt, I'm just guessing. We have a lot of college students here tonight.
We also have Adrian Grant from the current Leadership Tallahassee class, class 38.
Okay. Very good, very good. Everyone else who's waiting out there, feel free to come on in and take up these seats in the front. It will be riveting. Okay, moving on to item five, reports to be heard. Junior League of Tallahassee, spring break Mighty Meals. I'm a sustainer.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for letting us be here. School board members, I think you have a pink sheet, if you wanted to refer to it while I speak. First of all, I wanted to thank Dr. Gale and Laura Rogers, who's the lovely sustaining member of ours that set us up with Dr. Gale and invited us to be here tonight. We have a really awesome project that we wanted to share with you and everyone in the room, and educate y'all on the awesome work that we're doing. So my name is Katie Britt Williams. I am the president-elect for next year's Junior League of Tallahassee. We are an organization of over 500 women now in town, who, it's a volunteer organization where we have been training volunteers to effectively address basic needs for families and children in the Tallahassee community. This year is our 60th year in Tallahassee, and so we've been celebrating an anniversary year, which we're really excited about. And this year, it just is perfect timing for us. We are kicking off the inaugural Mighty Meals Project this Saturday. So it's a really awesome deal, and we're really excited about. It was initiated, the idea was initiated in 2017 when we were vetting potential community partners. We were talking with Second Harvest. We've been working really closely with Second Harvest to address basic needs for food with them for the past three years. So we've been really working really hard on how to more effectively address the problems that we have in the Tallahassee community, specifically in certain zip codes. So we were chatting with them, and the idea came up that there was no food being given out to school-aged childrens during spring break. And we found this idea and wanted to initiate something. We saw a hole and wanted to fix it, which we've had a really awesome experience with so far. We reached out to some of our guidance counselors, which through a lot of your help, we initiate those relationships. And they've also been really effective thus far in our Kids Boutique program, which I hope some of you have heard about, which is, we take usually over 100 students back to school shopping during the tax holiday in August each year. So we're on the 21st year, I think, of that, which has been really awesome. So this year, this Saturday, we have been working on packing over 190 boxes of food. So we're going to be giving out 190 boxes of food for a family of four for seven days. So that is over 15,000, I'm not gonna, I don't do public math, but that's over 15,000 meals. That's a lot. That is not my strength. So this year at 2:00 PM, we are gonna be at Godbe. And we have reached out to Title I schools through their guidance counselors, as I mentioned, to help, to get their help in identifying families that would qualify for this program. Which, again, we already had, thank you to all of those guidance counselors out there listening, we really appreciate you. So the schools we currently have participating this year, which we hope to expand this in the future years with your help, are Rutiger, Riley, Raw, Griffin, Bond, Godbe, Astoria Park, and Oak Ridge. Sorry if I mess up any of those names, I do not have any kiddos, so I don't know all of the schools. Great, okay, good. So along with these boxes, we are going to be giving out this awesome recipe guide, and we've worked really closely with Second Harvest to make it really nice-looking and make the box really special. It's just kind of copycatting the, you know, box delivery systems that, what are they called? Blue apron, thank you. I knew I would forget that. So make it really special for these families that are going to be coming by and getting these boxes this year. So we really hope for your participation and education, basically. We think that this could be a really big opportunity to expand distribution centers and not just have it in one spot, as well as address other breaks, school breaks, over the holidays or that kind of thing. So with your participation and, you know, sponsorship, or just any other ideas that you have, again, this is our not-first year of how we can more effectively meet this need, because as you know, there is no, there's no break for fighting hunger. So we're really excited about addressing this really crucial part in our mission. So if you have any questions, I would love to take them, or anyone in the room. It's, we're really excited and hope it goes really smoothly.
Ms. Striplin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this. This is a great initiative. I was just talking to somebody about a school, about what happens during spring break to some of our families that, you know, those kids that eat majority of their meals at school, and this was something that popped up on the radar just a few days ago, yeah. So I just wanted to thank you for putting us on, and also wanted to, those of you that are not aware, Katie is also a Big Sister in the Big Brothers Big Sisters program. Yes. She is one of our most active Bigs, spends a great deal of time. How long have you been matched now? Um, it's been two and a half years. Couple of years? Yeah. Yep, so she is a treasure, Katie is a treasure to our community and really leads by example, so thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Share everything, we're gonna be on social media and everything, so spread the word. We really appreciate it.
We are grateful for your partnership. We appreciate you picking us.
Thank you so very much.
Yes, thank you.
Katie, one more time, Saturday, Godbe, what time?
Uh, 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, Saturday, at Godbe High School, on the...
Barb Street Corridor.
Yes, on the, yeah, the bus loop area. Katie, this is one, is it really two? This is 1 o'clock.
It really is two.
It really is two?
Yeah. That's when I'm getting there.
For the time change.
You don't need to get me there. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Proud to be a Junior Leaguer.
Yes.
Item 5.05, Bargaining Updates. I see them approaching. Ms. McAllister.
Good evening, School Board members.
Good evening.
Good evening, School Board members.
Evening.
I'm here to provide an update. I'm very pleased to share with you all and those who are visiting us this evening that LCTA has tentatively agreed with Leon County School Board on language as well as a financial opportunity. What I'd like to do is to publicly thank both LCTA and LCS leadership teams as we work together so cohesively this time. We know we are working together to make sure that our environments for teachers are excellent. And in doing so, we have to collaborate. And this opportunity this past year has been awesome, working with the leadership team of LCTA. So, I wanted to publicly thank their team, led by Mr. Scott Mazer, as well as Sharia Griffin. But I also would like to thank the Leon County School Team, which consisted of Ms. Clemmons, Mr. Burgess, Sue Crawl, Scott Hanson, Alan Cox, Kim Banks, Julian Gregory, Sue Rochelle, Michelle Gail, and our favorite attorney, then Obamack Kinney-Williams, would be Leonard Deetson. So, we wanted to thank, and I wanted to offer a round of applause if you'd help me celebrate that, because that's huge. I'm not able at this time to share every detail. I want you to know it's forthcoming, because what's happening now are the teachers are preparing to ratify. So, we don't want to bring something to you prior to their ratification. We want to honor their opportunity to review the documentation and the information and then make a determination, and we'll share that information forthwith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Students, write this down. This is called collective bargaining. It's when the teachers negotiate their pay rate with the school district. Look at them all right. All right. Item 5.06, Health Updates. Dr. Cox.
Okay. Okay, let me give you some current status on COVID-19 virus. So, this was as of 8:00 this morning. And by the way, the Center for Disease Control, which is where I get my information from, I find that, you know, that's the most reliable source, they update at noon every day, so we can all pull it up. That website is with several other items of information on Leon County Schools homepage. But as of 8:00 this morning, we had 14 cases in the state of Florida. Nine of them are travel-related. The oldest was 81, the youngest was 29, and the rest are over 60. Eight females and six males. The question I'm getting asked is, what's the closest to us? We have one case in Santa Rosa, female, one case in Okaloosa, female. Everything else is south of Orlando. That's what we've got. There's 21.8 million people in our state, so I always like to kind of mention that. Let me mention this to you also, at the gender review yesterday, I forgot to bring this up. So, we have received a lot of shipments in regards to gloves, soap and hand sanitizer, the ZEP sanitizer and disinfectant that we use. We have plenty, and our schools plenty, at the warehouse. We've allocated money, as y'all know, $1,000 to each school site. So, we're doing real well on stockpiling those kind of things. We even have extra toilet paper, believe it or not. But just to review, review, the big thing, and this is nothing new to the Tallahassee community or the country in whole, is this thing called universal precautions. We have pushed it as hard as I know how to push it. We've sent out listserv, we've sent out video clips, and we've sent out flyers. And it's been all over the news, and I presented this to the District Advisory Council, and no questions were asked, because everybody's been inundated with universal precautions. Just a quick reminder, first, hand hygiene. Wash your hands after you go to the bathroom before you eat, eight, 11-plus times a day. Soap will work as well as some of our hand sanitizers. Respiratory hygiene. Don't cough and sneeze in your hand, cough, sneeze in the elbow. If you do, you have, if you use your hand, you want to have a tissue and you want to throw it away. And the final piece of that is the environmental hygiene. There's one with gloves, and environmental hygiene, and that's where Rod McQueen and Carl Green are going to speak to us tonight, okay? And that's disinfecting and sanitizing the environment.
Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Jones.
I think what we're doing, based on what you described to us yesterday in the gender review, I think is just extraordinary in the great lengths that we're going to, to, one, most importantly, educate our public. There is, regrettably, I think there's frequent, there are groups or constituencies that are using misinformation to either segregate or prejudice persons who, and when people are relatively uninformed. I think what we're doing and what your office is doing to inform most, not only just our adult constituencies, but our student constituencies about this, I think it's going to go a long way to mitigating the type of sophisticated responses and precautions that we need for everybody, but understanding the methods by which it is transmitted, that it's not done, you know, I just think we're doing a great job of educating our young people, and I think that's real critical.
Okay, great. So, at this point, Carl and Rod?
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Afternoon, Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board members. Just give you a little back history on how we've gotten to this point with our efforts. Back during 2009 with the H1N1 virus pandemic, this prompted us to become a little bit more vigorous, or vigilant, sorry, excuse me, with our efforts of cleaning for health throughout our schools and our buses. And we're currently updating that information to include the coronavirus, and we'll be posting that on the EHNA's website, which is listed up under the Code Enforcement and Compliance page. Mr. Green, our district school plant sanitation and safety coordinator, met with our principals to review our state requirements for educational facilities' cleaning criteria, which is also posted on our website, along with our custodial manual. He met with our transportation department today, the site supervisors, to go over the proper procedures for cleaning all of our common touch surfaces, our seat, which are seat backs, handrails, windows. And these efforts are done as part of the post-trip cleaning and process on every bus. As part of the district's effort to monitor these efforts, we conduct periodic sanitation inspections, which are the SREF reports, which is included in some of the consent items in some of our agenda for board meetings. And we've hired a district-level building maintenance supervisor. Her name is Terry Peck. She works with Mr. Green to assist the site administrators with new custodial hires, making sure they have the proper supplies, equipment, and she also assists with staff scheduling. At the district level, we also provide supplemental staffing, supplemental staffing when needed, when they're shorthanded with staff at each site. And Mr. Green and Ms. Peck work with the site administrators and building maintenance supervisors to work with our small business custodial vendors to provide staffing needs when they need additional staff at those schools. So, this is not anything new that we're doing. As Dr. Cox said earlier, this is something that we've prompted just now, that this time, we just have to be a little bit more vigilant in our efforts. So, I've asked Mr. Green to come up and speak specifically about the details of the cleaning.
All right. As, good afternoon, Board members and Board Chair, and Mr. Superintendent. As Rod said, we've been using the same disinfectant in the district since 2009. The reason why we picked it is because of how well it does and the amount of things that it kills. It's listed on all eight EPA web lists for sterilizers, bacterialicides, viralicides, fungicides, mildicides. I can go for an hour on the specifics of what it kills. Got a certain EPA registration number, 183983. It's easy for me to go look, because they, when something new like this happens, they list the registration numbers for what it kills. It's ready to use, it's easy to use. You know, it, there's no rinsing required, except on food contact surfaces, cafeteria tables. You have to take an extra step of actually rinsing those. So, then, you know, one of the things Mr. Jones was talking about, about, you know, misconceptions and stuff, is, you know, the difference between sanitizing and cleaning and disinfecting. Well, you know, sanitizing and cleaning is done, and we use germicidal neutral cleaners to do that. That's, those are normally used in our schools. The disinfecting process comes after the cleaning process, and that is the extra step of spraying on the disinfectant. So, the disinfectant's used after the initial cleaning, and we have, but we have to be certain that we're using the right products to initially clean also, and that's one of the other things that we do. As I said, this is, it's in our warehouse. It's been in our warehouse for 2000, since 2009. Not anything different than we currently or haven't been doing. We've stepped up the efforts to make sure everybody knows what we've been doing also. Thank you.
Ms. Bowen has a question.
Yes, I'm appreciative of the efforts, and I think that we are on the right side of doing what we probably ought to be doing, and perhaps my questions might be best asked after the superintendent. So, maybe I'll, go ahead, Mr. Superintendent, and then I'll ask.
To add a few things to what Rod and Carl and Dr. Cox were speaking to. We had a conference call with all site administrators, all the principals, today at 1:30, and we talked about this very issue, about the abundance of supplies we have, making sure, ensuring those were in our schools and in our classrooms. Ms. McAllister brokered a deal with the Teachers Association and with Lesba, both LCTA and in Lesba have wholeheartedly signed on to help us in this effort to ensure that all of our surfaces are being sanitized and disinfected each and every day, which means teachers in their classrooms are going to take responsibility for helping the custodial and maintenance staff at every single site to ensure these things are happening, as is our bus drivers in our bus, in our bus compounds. So, we've pushed this cleanliness initiative, the disinfecting, the washing of the hands. I think everyone in this room right now is scared to death to cough. But, you know, this is a very, it's also, it's a very, it's a very fluid, fluid situation. And we met two weeks ago, had a community meeting organized by Ron Sacks, and very appreciative to him and his efforts, where us, along with city and county governments, Florida State, Florida A&amp;M, Tousie Community College, Tousie Memorial Hospital, Capital Health Plan, Capital Regional Hospital. So, we all had a unified message. Now, since that time, some organizations and some groups have kind of gone their own path, which is fine. I'm hearing rumors of things happening at Florida State University after spring break, at Florida A&amp;M University. As of right now, Leon County Schools is staying the course, and will follow instructions and continue to monitor the situation and accept guidance from the CDC, the Department of Education, and the Office of the Governor. As far as travel, our message right now is keep calm and march on, meaning until we have domestic travel advisories or domestic travel restrictions, we have groups all over the southeast, and not only southeast, but in the northeast as well. Until we receive information telling us otherwise, those travel plans, field trips, athletic contests, academic contests, will continue as normal. If we receive information from the CDC or other agencies, other health agencies advising us otherwise, we will take the appropriate actions as necessary. When it comes to attendance of our students, some parents and families, also along the lines of field trips, and if a parent, obviously, if a parent does not feel comfortable sending their child out of town to an event, they have every right to keep that child at home. They do understand that refunds, however, unless a theme park closes or things shut down, the refunds are hard to come by, and that was part of what they signed off on when they elected to participate to begin with. As far as the attendance of our students, some very small number of families and students have decided to self-impose a quarantine, which is, which is fine, and they're right, and we're doing everything we possibly can to work with those families on a case-by-case basis to ensure those students are still receiving the instruction the best we possibly can remotely. But Chief Hunkyard had a good quote this morning. Quarantined means quarantine. It's not quarantine Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then we, you know, come to school other days. It means if we're home, we're at home, and we are going to respect that, but we're not going to quarantine ourselves on other, our days that otherwise are school days. Again, we talked with LCTA. We have a good relationship with them and with Lesba moving forward. Guys, this is very fluid. Like Dr. Cox said, weeks ago, it wasn't in the country. Now, it's in the country. It wasn't in the state. Now, it's in the state, and it's in the panhandle. It's only a matter of time. There's lots of discussion about, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to try to play the guess game, the what-if game, but we are prepared as best we possibly can for what if all those scenarios were to occur. I heard the commissioner say they were standing up about 400,000 additional virtual school seats, and going to bring in 15 servers and train 10,000 teachers. We know that we do not have the capacity to, on a daily basis, offer virtual instruction to 33,000 or 34,000 students. We understand that. So, but with the help of the department and others, we'll look for paths. Our main focus right now, if something does change in the weeks, in the weeks to come, are graduating seniors, to ensure that those seniors are graduating on time and can move on to their what's-next-step in life, whether that is the military, whether it's community college, a four-year school, lively technical college, to ensure that those kids are graduating on time and are not missing out on opportunities post-secondary. We'll continue to monitor the situation. We're going to have another staff meeting first thing tomorrow morning, get an update from the CDC, and as things change and transpire, we'll adjust accordingly. But it goes back to that same message of stay calm and march on, and that's, we're going to do that the best we possibly can. But we're ready, we're prepared, and we're going to continue to have ongoing conversations as to how to respond as things continue to change.
Superintendent, Madam Chair.
Ms. Striplin. Thank you. As the end of the year approaches, I know we have schools that are planning out of county travel, possibly even out of state travel. Are we, are we, is it a wait-and-see, or are we, at this point, leaning toward giving some advisement on those trips?
As, as far as domestic travel is concerned, we have groups today that are in New York City, they're in Washington, DC. We have trips planned for central Florida, trips planned to Atlanta, Georgia. Right now, domestically, we are, we don't have any restrictions or any advisories, so we're going to operate business as normal. If, however, the CDC, the Governor's Office, and the Department of Education issue travel advisories for certain areas domestically, we will adjust accordingly. For those families and/or staff members that are traveling abroad over the course of spring break, they will, they will have to deal with federal agents returning to the country as far as whether they're quarantined or not. For our employees that are quarantined, that if they do leave the country and are quarantined, they also, they understand that that leave time is part of their leave time. If it's part of a school-related or school-sponsored function, which we do not have any overseas during the, during the spring break, that that would be, you know, incumbent upon us as a school system to provide relief to those, to those employees. We also have instructed our principals to ensure that teachers have 10 days worth of emergency plans at their, at their ready. So, in case something happens to an employee, we will have access to their educational plans for a 10-day period and then, basically, for weekend days, which would be the 14 days of incubation.
Good. Madam Chair. Ms. Bowen.
Thank you. Mrs. Superintendent, I think you answered many of the questions that were on my mind, and I'm happy to hear what I think is overplanning rather than underplanning. I'd rather be chicken little with, "The sky's falling, the sky's falling," to hit me on the head, than for us not to be in a position of having a plan in place, because I know when we're talking about the weather, we have a plan, you know, and we know that all schools will probably be closed if the tornado is coming. Well, this tornado is coming in the way of what I call wind and the breath that we breathe. And so, it's good to know that this is a district-wide plan, a decision that will be made, should we have additional or any other coronaviruses patients here. One of the things I was thinking about with this being spring break, I think, next week, isn't it? Is there a move afoot that we will disinfect some of these areas now that the students are out of and have them prepared and ready for them when they come back? And then, I heard you say that you met with city and county government, I believe. And many of our children, as you know, will get their meals at schools. A lot of them don't get meals once they get home, all right? You talked about that, I can see. And then, a lot of our children will go by the weekend school pantries to take food home on the weekends. So, I'm wondering if with that cooperation and collaboration... So I'm wondering if with that cooperation and collaboration, if there's been any decisions or discussion with, say, Meals on Wheels to, to provide for those children who won't be at our school when and if we have to close? And I suspect we may. I'm looking to my crystal ball, because Fulton County, Georgia, I think, is already, did close. So tho, those kinds of questions, I'd love to.
So to your first, to your first point, yes, ma'am, we are absolutely going to take advantage of five days or really six days without students, if you take into consideration the planning day on Monday, the 22nd. So we are going to do a deep dive in our, in our schools. We already talked to Mr. Green and, and his staff, we're going around site by site to work with them to ensure those things are happening during the course of spring break, that we're doing a deeper dive. It's also a lot of time where there's, they wax floors, they strip the floors to get ready for that last push of the final nine weeks of the school year. So a lot of these plans were already underway, you know, notwithstanding the, the, the virus. But yes, absolutely, we'll take advantage of that. It's funny, you mentioned about the, the meals, you know, we're not, you know, these college kids, they, it's, it's kind of easy, it's easier for them to switch gears and go online, and they all have, they all have the access and the tools and the things at the ready, and, and, and we don't. We, we know this. We have, you know, again, focused on seniors, but, you know, that seven-year-old, eight-year-old that does not have a laptop at home, that does not have connectivity, does not have access to the internet, I mean, there are bigger issues. One thing that you brought up was feeding, feeding children during this time. Again, this is a very fluid situation. I'm sure that will come into play. That was one of Chief Hunkyard's talking points today among staff members. So I think everything's in play. We just don't, we don't know what we don't know, and I think we're, we're all hoping for the best but preparing for the worst.
Good. And I appreciate that because, you know, in these kinds of crises, we're, we're certainly in this community together. And I was saying to one of my constituents who called to me today, "Not to worry, we're going to be on top of this, because when the wind blows, it's going to blow to the four corners of the county." So I won't be able to hold the wind. This sounds a little crazy in my part of the county, and neither will you. And so to hear what you're doing and the broadness and the breadth that you are providing to make sure that all of our children are, are protected is, is, is something that, that makes me very happy about with this worldwide event that we are addressing.
Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, really appreciate what your staff are doing. We know that y'all are in charge of the schools and that, you know, you appreciate that you're meeting some things that we talked about at the meeting yesterday. I just want to sort of go back, just review for a second. We talked about the new rules for the custodians, not the new rules, but reinforcing the rules for the custodians. And I really hope that we'll have checklists at the schools for every classroom so that if there's a substitute custodian, they have a checklist to know exactly what's to be done, and the principal then has a log of, you know, every single day that what's needed is done. It seems like we should have some sort of communication drill. I'm going to leave that, of course, to you, but that we make sure, since we know listserv does not reach everyone, that we have a way to reach out by mobile phone numbers and so forth to our families if we need to give them directions, because we might have to give them directions every single day for a period of time. And I hope that system is, you know, we've really made sure it works. And the other thing, of course, is the instructional plan for both our teachers, our parents, and our kids, and I look forward to a little more fleshing out of that. It sounds like you're talking about right now 10-day plans, which is good, but, you know, I would like to know what are the actual plans of getting that information home to the students, so.
We sent, we sent a, some information out, what, Chris, about mid-afternoon, to, to all of our, all of our families that are signed up for listserv, all of our sites, and then they pushed it out to all of our families. So I would encourage you to, to look at that when you go home this evening. There's a lot of good information on there that's, that speaks to what we're doing as a school system, and also some information coming from the CDC. As far as long, long-term plans, if we, if we shut schools down for a month or two months, that's, that's going to be, that's, it's an issue, and I don't want to sugarcoat it. I don't want to dance around it. I mean, I want to call, it is what it is. But, you know, we have a lot of smart people in this room that will figure it out. And, and we're going to do what's best first to protect for the safety and welfare of our children and our employees, and then academically figure out a plan to move forward so they aren't, so they aren't behind.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I appreciate that very much, and I, I think this is a much more robust conversation than we had yesterday, and appreciate the movement on that, and, and I know that you are full of a lot of very smart and capable people. So I know that.
Including you all.
Well, thanks. My question is specifically with regard to the seniors, who, the graduating seniors, where their graduation date is, can literally impact everything, moving out, realizing that it was really important to my daughter to be able to start in the summer, right after graduation. How many openings do we have? What's our capacity in virtual school if we had to absorb the senior?
Right, and we've done a lot of, we've, we've talked about that. Right now, I honestly am leaning towards those core, core teachers in areas that are graduation requirements, like American Government, Economics, English IV, and potentially a math, is leaving that in the hands of their current teachers as opposed to trying to punt back to the beginning of a semester. Look, our, our teachers will see them through. After spring break, there's really only six weeks left. Now, the bigger question then is AP exams, you know, do enrollment classes. Jillian was on the phone today with our do enrollment folks, working out a plan for those kids. Right now, I'm, I'm leaning towards leaving it in the hands of, of our teachers as opposed to flopping to some type of virtual program. I just think they can help see those seniors through. District-wide, if there's something virtually that we can do, if we see that it's going to be a month or two months or something along those lines, and the, and the department can help us in those efforts, then we'll absolutely look at it. And then there was a conversation today, if we need to, to provide those, you know, that senior class of 2,500 students, each get a laptop, where those 2,500 seniors can then take those laptops home if necessary. I know at, at Rickards alone, we purchased 30 for everybody, so there's 600, there's about 1,200 laptops at Rickards alone. So is to compile those resources, and if we see that's the best, a good plan, then we send those resources home to our seniors, and then in order to get their diploma, they give us our laptop, but, you know. So it's just trying to be creative, to be mindful of those kids and their post-secondary plans, whatever those plans are, to keep them on track.
Right. And I regret, I wish we didn't have to have this conversation publicly, because I, I don't want us to be the cause of unnecessary panic. I do believe in steady at the helm and move on, you know, but planning relentlessly. The thing that really struck me about this is when I heard the report, people were comparing it to the flu, and, yeah, we've been here, done that with H1N1 and so forth. But in the case of the flu, we've built up immunities over time. There isn't, we don't, there's no theraphlu for this, right? We don't have vaccines. We don't have medication to treat it, and so we don't know what we're dealing with. We aren't sure if the warm weather is going to make it better. I pray it will. I hope the sun comes and clears it out, and we're done and moving on, and we have another, we'll have plenty of another crisis for another day. But I do appreciate your staff, and I was thinking about the portion where you worked with the LCTA with regard to sterilization and cleansing, but also with, you know, putting lesson plans together in binders, maybe just for the younger ones to send home. I mean, if there's ways that we can think outside the box, I'm sure our teachers are very capable of thinking about how they could keep their students, if they're not sick, engaged, even without a computer or without access to the internet. So I just appreciate knowing that you're continuing to be on top of that. I think that's an issue I know I raised of concern back in January. And I, are there, is there, are there, I know that the, I think the Department of Education was calling on teachers to volunteer to take a six-hour course to become certified to teach virtually. Is that something that?
I'm honestly not prepared to speak to that tonight. I mean, I, I know Ms. Gregory and I briefly discussed it today as we were talking through the senior situation, but I can certainly get more information.
Okay, well, I'm not necessarily worried about that specific thing, except just to know that you all are really preparing for the worst and hoping for the best.
Right.
One quick.
Ms. Bowen.
Madam Chair, one quick question, Mrs. Superintendent. I ask it only because I got it from a constituent today. Well, what's it going to take for the superintendent to close, close the schools? And I said, ma'am, let's just wait a while. I don't know how to answer that question, but you already know that that is out there. What will it take? How close will it have to be? And so I offer that as you continue to plan with the experts around you.
And I think, and I appreciate that, Ms. Bowen, and, you know, and the, and that pressure's going to mount as we see universities quarantining and doing different things.
They have communal living.
We've had, right, and we, we, you know, we've said from the beginning, we're not the experts in this area, and we're going to really lean on and rely on the CDC and other folks who are the health experts to help us through this process, and they know what, they know what's best. And if they feel as though it's best that we shut schools down, that we do this, we're going to rely on, on their guidance. In the meantime, other than the things we discussed, we're going to continue to do what I just said, stay calm and march on, and, you know, reassure children that everything's going, is okay. You know, the sky is not falling, the world's not coming in. We all have to be vigilant in this effort to maintain our health, to stay germ-free the best as possible, and then to adapt and react as conditions change.
Good. Thank you for your planning.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any persons to be heard?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's one speaker, Janice Sellers. You would please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
It's not going to take that long. Great evening. It's a wonderful, lovely evening. I'm, my name is Janice Sellers. I am from ATMSA. I know a few of you wonder why I'm dressed like this. Well, tonight, we are doing our performance to Addams Family. All bought the tickets, and we do have some that's on sale if anyone would like to join us. There are $4 for students, for younger kids, $6 for adults, and $12 for VIP. So there was some invitation that was sent out through the mail, but I do have some for the board members, so I'm hoping to see you there. We started this back in 2013. Our first performance was at Disney High School. 2014, we did Annie. 2015, we did Peter Pan. 16, Lion King. 2017, Dr. Seuss, and Beauty and the Beast. And 2018, under Dr. Wilson. And last year, 2019, was the Aladdin, and this year's the Addams Family, under Ms. Ricardo. I was going to call her Lucy, but that's what I call her, Ms. Ricardo. So we hope that you'll be able to come, and I do have my tickets for my guests, so I hope to see y'all there, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are so proud of Appalachia and all the great things you're doing in the arts.
Okay, thank you.
You mean those aren't your real nails?
These are my real nails.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Glad to be.
By the way, the performance is going on now, so y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Be safe.
Consent.
All right. That takes us to the general consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we move all, we move, a motion for acceptance for all consent agenda items.
Second. Moved by Mr.? Pardon?
It's got to be 7 to 17.
Item 7 to 17. Is that your motion, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Moved by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Duplin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimously approved.
Mm-hmm.
Takes us to items 18, the consent agenda on construction from which I will abstain, just to avoid any appearance of a conflict with my employment.
Move approval.
Moved by Ms. Duplin, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, show it unanimously, uh, sorry. It's approved by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. Items, sorry.
19.01.
19.01.
Right. Superintendent, what?
Madam Chair, item 1901 is a pre-suit meditated settlement agreement for refund between Leon County Schools and Education Logistics Incorporated, better known as, as Edgelog. As we discussed yesterday, back in 2008, Leon County Schools entered into a contract with Edgelog Incorporated to provide services to include GPS tracking of our, of our buses as well as field trip request forms. Another part of that initial contract was amount set aside to help with route optimization and school bus stop optimization, as we discussed prior to yesterday. We all know what happened the first day of school as a result of, well, so let's, let's just say this. So after, after the first week of school, by the time we got things back in order on the, the Monday of the second week of school, we were back to business as usual. I made the decision then that we were going to find out exactly what happened, who was at fault, and to try, attempt to recoup a monetary settlement. So at this time, I'd like Rob Clark, who is our attorney, the representative in this, us in this matter, to come forward and to explain a little bit about how the process played out and what the ultimate settlement agreement was between us and Education Logistics Incorporated. So, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark. Sorry you had to wait all through all this.
My pleasure. Thank you. Madam Chair, as I mentioned yesterday during our agenda review, I don't need to remind this board and the superintendent what happened in the first week of school. After that first week, the superintendent asked us to come over here and talk with you and to try to, and, and get involved in an investigation as to what happened, and also to pursue a claim against Edgelog if the facts warranted that we do so. Our law firm exchanged a lot of information. We talked to a number of the staff within the district. We met extensively with the superintendent and got his guidance on how to proceed, and we ultimately decided that we would attempt at least to have a pre-suit negotiation with Edgelog, which ultimately resulted in, I'll, I'll call it two and a half negotiation sessions with a state-certified or a court-certified mediator. And Edgelog flew its representatives here from Montana, and I say two and a half because the half is one time they tried to come here and they got canceled in Atlanta Airport, and we still met with the mediator. So we, we engaged in a lot of pre-suit, if you will, discussions and negotiations with Edgelog. What we ultimately concluded is that there was an interest from Edgelog in trying to resolve this matter, and ultimately, we resulted in a settlement that is subject to your, your approval and that we recommend that you favorably consider it, and I want to walk through the settlement if I could. And I can talk a little bit about any detail you want, but essentially, the idea is that we were, we are going to terminate our relationship with Edgelog, subject to one caveat that I'll talk about as part of the settlement. Secondly, Edgelog is going to pay the district a lump sum payment of $250,000, and that's going to be paid within 20 days of the approval of this settlement. In addition, Edgelog is going to continue to provide services to the district under their pre-existing 2008 contract for this school year. So that means that the monies that we owe them for this service, which they provided without incident, will be provided for free this year, and that's a value of approximately $30,000. In addition, Edgelog has agreed to allow the hardware that was installed in our buses to install tablets, that those, that hardware would remain in place. And when you consider the installation and the need to reinstall new hardware, it would be extremely expensive. So all told, the value of the settlement to the district is approximately $333,000. I want to cover one other issue about the settlement. I want to be clear on the amount that the district actually paid. The original agenda item that came before this board back in 2018 was to allocate $720,000 to this contract. Now, that's, I need to focus on that number for a second, because that's for year one and year two and year three, okay? $720,000. When the problems developed, we were in year one. The district paid a total amount of $473,000, $473,000. As soon as the issue arose, the superintendent directed that we not pay Edgelog any more money, and so that's the amount that we paid, $473,000. We paid them no money after the problems arose. So when we moved forward at the litigation, with the negotiations, we identified that Edgelog also had some concerns about the district, which we felt were very defensible, but they had a, some criticisms about some data input and some other issues, and it's only to say. only to say that there's two sides to every story, and the primary purpose that we're recommending it is because we can get significant value, uh, from Edgelog, uh, without engaging in what would probably be extremely complex, uh, expensive, and lengthy litigation. This would require forensic experts and other, uh, type of experts to get involved, and we think that if we can recoup almost what we paid, it's a win-win, and that we recommend that the district approve the settlement. With that, I'll answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent, did you wanna add to that?
No, ma'am, I'd just like to thank, uh, Rob and Ally and, and, and their team, you know, we, I don't wanna say vindication, but this is, we knew where we were, um, it's unfortunate the incident happened, we moved on, we're past that now, uh, I feel good about this settle, this settlement agreement, and it's, uh, it's time for a new dawn and a new day, and there will come another time, though, that we take a stab at transportation, this time, we're gonna go slower than we go fast, we know that we're $9 million in the red in that department, and we, we can do and will do better. Um, but I think this is a step in the right direction to part ways and, and to get what, get back what we could, and I think $330,000 speaks for itself.
Yes, it does. Ms. Striplin, I'm sorry.
I'm ready to move approval. I think y'all did a, a great, great job on this, it was very unfortunate, um, but it's done. Um, we need to move forward, and, and I'm happy that we're recouping some of what we lost, um, and more than that, we learned a lot of lessons along the way.
Yes, we did.
Appreciate it as well.
All right, moved by Ms. Striplin, second by Ms. Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, show it unanimously approved, and we appreciate your good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob.
And madam, if I could also mention, superintendent was intimately involved throughout this process, we appreciate everything he's done.
Awesome.
Great, good, 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 good. All right.
All right, very good. Uh, Ms. McAllister?
Yes, I'm back again, back again. I'm here to talk about the famous, for some, infamous for others, the best and brightest, um, 2019, 2020, and so for those of the young people that are in the audience that are studying to be educators, this is some interesting information for you all. So what I'd like to do before you, you all have in your information, the MOU, which represents the memorandum of understanding that was created between the Leon County Teachers Association, the Leon County Support Staff, and the Leon County School Board members, uh, membership. And what this document does is it codifies our relationship as, uh, it relates to implementing the state's plan for awarding teachers a financial bonus and instructional paraprofessionals based on their performance in the classroom. So this year, the best and brightest program is a three-tiered bucket program, if you will. The first bucket, the teachers can be awarded monies from, falls under the retention bucket, the second is recruitment, and the third is recognition. So what I'd like to do is go through those briefly and explain to you, and then give you an opportunity to ask questions if you so choose. The first bucket is retention. According to the DOE, there was a formula that was created that if your school raised their school grade three percentage points over a period of time, um, then you would be deemed a retention school. Years ago, when we were all teaching, or started teaching, if you will, we used to, we refer to the term retain or retention, uh, individuals or students who are kept back or held back. But in the DOE's eyes, it means retain, keep, uh, strong teachers. So if you were at a retention school, then you were given or were awarded or will be awarded monies financially. So let's talk about that. There are 13 schools that are deemed retention schools in Leon County Schools. Um, and all 13 schools, if the teachers at that site were highly effective or effective based on their Leon Leeds evaluations for the 2018-19 school year, they're either awarded $2,500 or $1,000. Okay, so I'm gonna say that again, $2,500 or $1,000. That's if your evaluation was highly effective or effective. That's a retention school. If you're a principal at the retentions, one of the retention schools, you also had to meet criteria, um, and I wanna talk about the criteria for teachers, 'cause not just if you get a highly effective or effective, there's some other parameters attached to that. So let's talk about that quickly before I talk about principals. If you're a classroom teacher in the traditional sense, that means you award grades, you're a teacher of record, that means in our focus system that talks, that sends notes to parents, documents, students, keeps up with student grades, then you're awarded those monies if you were at the school last year and at the school this year. Two years. If you're not at the school anymore, then you're not entitled to the money. That means if you left mid-year, or if you're, if you, uh, didn't start the second year, then you're not awarded the monies, okay? Um, if, uh, you're not at the school for two years, you'll fit in a different category, so I'll go over that. So in order to be a retention teacher, you had to be at the school last year and this year, highly effective or effective, and then the teacher of record, then you're awarded the $2,500 or the $1,000, okay? Now, if you're a principal at the school, you had to meet the criteria of your school grade improving over a period of time, and you had to be a principal at the school for at least four years, including this school year. And I'm, it's sad to say, but, uh, the 13 schools, we only had seven principals who qualified, and some missed it by four days. So that's, that's heart-wrenching. So because we know that every school that performs, every school that moves their kids in any capacity, it starts at the top, right? Leadership starts there. So that's the retention bucket. The second bucket is recruitment, and we know how important it is to recruit, uh, teachers to our profession, but those have specific parameters, there's an application process, and because the best and brightest had already begun and the year had progressed, what we're gonna do is make that available to teachers in the fall, and we'll work with LCTA to create that application, and then there'll be a process, and we'll bring that back to the board. The third bucket is re-recognition, that's what a lot of people are, are excited about, if you will, and recognition includes both classroom teachers and instructional paraprofessionals. And what's better about this last bucket, if you will, if there's anything great about giving people a bonus that's not tied to their base pay, is the fact that you don't have students, you don't have to have students tied to you in the recognition bucket. If you're on the teacher's salary schedule, you qualify for that. So your, your media specialist, your guidance counsel, guidance counselors, all the people that don't give the grades are still entitled to that financial award. The difference is, I wanna make sure I'm clear about this, the monies that are given under the retention bucket, those are deemed by the state. They told us how much money we had to give those persons. The monies given out in the recognition bucket, if you will, that's negotiated. So we sat with LCTA and the Lesbo organization to determine that. So if you were a teacher for the, uh, 2018-19 school year, you were deemed highly effective or effective, you were given a $1,000 financial award. If you're an instructional paraprofessional with an evaluation, um, and we did a crosswalk, and you'll see the crosswalk in your memorandum of understanding, if you were deemed exceeds expectations, that means you were highly effective, meets expectations meant you're effective, then you were given a financial, a $500 financial award, okay? Retention monies will be paid out to teachers, have been so, recognition monies will be paid out to teachers in the month of March. We're just excited that we were able to affect as many people, uh, working together with both organizations, so we're excited about that.
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Sorry, sorry, I keep trying to look around at them.
No, you did a great job.
Because I wanna make sure they understand because-
Guys now know more than, more than what you probably did.
But what I tell people is teaching is a passion, once a teacher, always a teacher, and this is the only career that if you find yourself going into it, that you have to beg for a raise. So think about that.
Dana, don't, 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 don't.
But we're working together, we are working together to make sure that every teacher receives some type of financial award, either through the Leon County negotiations or through the other, so.
Well done.
I'm passionate about this.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's great. I'm done.
Their motion?
I move the acceptance of this particular item and applaud the presenter.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Moved by Ms. Bowen, second by Ms. Wood, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, show it unanimously approved.
So those of you that are education majors, don't, don't, just forget everything you just heard, okay? And because the, one, I'm totally confused, so I imagine you're totally confused, that, but the good news is that both the House and the Senate voted this year to do away with the best and brightest program, thankfully, so we're, we're done with that, uh, at least for now, and can focus more on raising the beginning teacher pay to 47,500 or 50,000 and addressing compression, and really move the needle as a, as a state and a district on teacher pay, not to include bonuses, like actually in their salary. So keep on keeping on with your, with your education path, right? We need teachers.
And you'll never find a more rewarding career.
Totally.
You'll never go home as happy as you are leaving that classroom every day, finding joy in your students.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. Um, Superintendent, any comments?
Uh, no, I think I'm good. Oh, wait, wait, no, I'm not good. So, uh, spring break, spring break is next, uh, next week. First, to our employees, uh, please take some time to catch your breath before the last push of the final nine weeks of the school year. Spend time with your family, friends, get to the beach, the weather's supposed to be nice, get out in the sunshine, suck up some vitamin D. To, uh, to our students, spring break was always, as a former high school principal, one of those hold-your-breath moments. So have fun, but please do it, uh, in a responsible manner. Do not, do not, do not drink and drive, do not get in the vehicle with someone who's impaired or under the influence, uh, call a cab, call a parent, call an Uber, call me.
Stay home.
But please, please, please stay safe. Everyone that leaves for spring break, we wanna welcome you back, uh, on the, on the 23rd, safe and, safe and sound.
To a disinfected school.